Good morning, everybody. Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
That's you. I guess I'm called.
Yes, you are. We are glad to have you.
Hi, it's great to be here. I am in Berkeley County because it's the greatest week for secondary schools performing arts. Today and yesterday, we're having the Region Nine Band Ratings at Musselman, and of course tomorrow, Saturday, is the best choral music festival at Martinsburg High School.
Randall, we know who you are, but...
Oh, my name is Randall Reed Smith, and I sit on the governor's cabinet, and I serve proudly as his curator for the West Virginia Department of Arts, Culture and History. Do you want me to spell it to you?
No, no.
R A N D A L L. It is a hyphenated last name. R E I D hyphen S M I T H. Read the Scottish spelling.
That's for all the visitors watching.
Hi, everybody. So, I just wanted to come by and say thank you again for letting us help. We're excited that the governor did help out with that wonderful exhibit. If you've not seen it down at the library, you need to go and see it. This is a great time for Berkeley County and their history, and we're all excited about the 250th. I have a meeting tomorrow that Matt Umstead, who is a treasurer, to set up all of this. We are going to meet about the regional museum, the commission that you all set up, and we're also meeting about Morgan Morgan's Park. Thank you all for taking that over. We are putting together some people to help. I think it's a great community project. Get some kids to go down and clean it up, you know, their community service hours, and we will help with cleaning up the Morgan.
I got to tell you, I came by there on Monday, and there was probably at least ten cars and fishermen already there this year.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Stock truck must have just left.
Well, I didn't see the stock truck, but they were, I mean, they, it was, the parking lot was full. So, I can't imagine with the cooperation of an adjacent landowner, if we can make that another little jewel for our county.
A lot of people don't even know it's a park.
You're right.
You know, and that's because it's not well-maintained, and it doesn't look like a park.
But it's a very important park.
It is.
It's our first settler of West Virginia, or settler. The last thing, because you got me off of my rhythm.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm a musician, so I was off my rhythm. What was the last thing, Matt? Oh, Lord have mercy. Yeah, well, and I'm glad, because Doug was outside. I saw him for a minute.
Yeah.
At the park we did. Well, I had to give you greetings from the governor. I mean, he's just been immensely helpful. Oh, the libraries. As you all may know, there was a bill, the library commission will come under us more. We're trying to help out with the library down there. I know they need a new HVAC. We've looked into that. We're hoping for maybe some ARPA funds to do with that. What else is going on? There's one other thing I'm going to forget. Shame on you.
Uh-huh. There we go. I've been shamed.
I hadn't even been talking to HD about the roundhouse.
Oh, thank you. We're very excited about that. We have the plans for that. We have looked in for grants that they're looking at to help out with the roundhouse. I've been at this, you know, I'm in my 17th year, and this is the most excited I've been about the roundhouse. I really believe with the energy that you have now, it's want to get done, and it's so important.
Very, very, very. Well, we got the city of Martinsburg involved, too. That's your job. Everybody, all.
Well, why wouldn't Martinsburg be involved? It is in their city limits.
Well, they're going to put members on the board.
Good, 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 good. So, if we can help out, we're more than happy to do that. You know, I'm the State Department of Preservation Officer. We look at some of the, oh, we had to look at the windows and stuff like that, and we just, we keep in touch. HD's great to work with. Matt is great to work with. I'm trying to think if there's, there was one more thing.
Oh, my gosh, Jim.
That's okay. Is there anything you all need?
We really appreciate your help and the interaction that we're having and trying to figure some of this stuff out. You know, the museum that we're working on in town, I think it's going to be something that will be beneficial to our community and the state for years and years to come.
Well, here's what, when I talked to Matt yesterday, here's the way I feel about this. You know, the Eastern Panhandle, of course, is extremely important to what's going on in the state. And I know a lot of people up here, I'm up here all the time, and they go into DC for a lot of their cultural events and, you know, the museums. But I want them to stay here and be proud of what this region has done, and this is the way you do it, by creating these wonderful cultural venues. And you hear the governor talk constantly about cultural and heritage tourism, and we don't want them just to come and visit. We want them to stay. We want them to shop. You all still do B and O tax up here, right? And, you know, it is a proven fact that cultural and heritage tourist visitors to the state, they stay usually one to two days longer, and they spend, on the average, about $186 more a day. So, those are the type of visitors we want to see in the state of West Virginia, and we want our own people. You know, you're only get, you know, I was an opera singer. I sang for you all the last time poorly, but that's okay. But they would cut everything else in Germany before they would cut their arts, because nobody is one to want to live in a town where it's a cultural desert. They want something to enhance their kids' education. They want something where they can entertain their family, their spouses, and they want someplace they can take potential clients to say, "This is where you want to be." And, you know, I always say, tell everybody, I love coming to the Eastern Panhandle. The five-hour drive doesn't bother me in the least bit. So, if there's anything you all need, please get in touch with us and let us, you know, help as much as we can. Okay?
Was there anything about our 250th birthday party coming up?
Matt has, well, I've checked, that's what I wanted to tell you. I have checked everything off of my list. Oh, the historic highway markings, that's what it is. They are in place. Have you all gone to see them?
Some of them, yeah.
What do you mean, some of them? I got them done in 30 days.
Well, I don't get to travel the roads as much, because I usually go to location and...
Well, I'm sure Matt will drive you out. He knows where they are. He picked the places.
Okay, Matt. It's all on you now.
But no, it's, and I gave you all the books the last time. If you see any of those that are damaged, will you please let us know, because we have money to restore them and that type of stuff. But, yeah, but everything was checked off on my to-do list that, when I was here the last time, so I needed another list. And I saw Doug outside, but I just told him, I said, you know, "Call me if you need anything." So, he did give me a list.
So, we started the conversation, I started the conversation a couple of weeks ago with members of the Roundhouse, CVB, and the, and the, and Main Street Martinsburg about putting together a video, and we have a trolley car, and try to start putting a tour together so that when people come to Berkeley County, we can have a tour that'll take them to all these historic places that we have, and, you know, some type of audio that will give them a little bit of information about it. And then maybe, we've talked a little bit about trying to put together an app that will, that they could obviously put on their phone and walk it or bike it or drive to these areas as well, so that we're, we're, you know, publicizing that a little bit more than we have in the past. Because I lived here 42 years, and there's so much I don't know about it myself. So, I think it would be something really neat to add.
Well, I was in conversation with Matt, oh, gosh, probably six months ago. I think what would be a good idea, because, you know, Educational Broadcasting Authority, which is West Virginia Public Broadcasting, they are, you know, aligned with us. I think it'd be great if we got them here to do like a documentary on the 250th. And I would love to work with anybody that you all tell me to work with on that, and that would be very, very helpful, and that wouldn't cost you anything except your time.
Good idea.
Maybe we can get some famous celebrities from the state to show up and give a little talk, too.
Well, and here's what I will suggest that you do. Go on YouTube and look at Road to Statehood. It's my favorite documentary they did. They did it for 2013 for the sesentennial, and you want to look at something like that and maybe do something 15, 20 minutes. It's just a great, it's a great advertisement, a great marketing tool. And so, we're going to talk, you know, tomorrow about the museum. I love that intersection there with the library, with the old courthouse where they're looking at putting the museum, that wonderful where the guys are moving their shop, their flower shop, knick-knack shop, down to that white building that's there across the way.
Already complete.
Yeah. It's, that's a great area to, you know, to start welcoming people into the town. Any questions?
Make a nice cultural area.
Absolutely.
Be designated.
Absolutely. If you're all free tomorrow night, and in the daytime, you should come down to, tomorrow night is concert choirs, all day Saturday are show choirs. And you have a great show choir here. The good times are amazing.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Anything to do? That's great.
Thank you.
All right, bye. You guys have a great day.
All right, thank you for coming. Any other items from the public?
How can you talk that?
Well, we can't, so I'm glad there's nobody else. I'm just sorry I got him off of, off of his...
That's what I did.
Yes, you did. Thank you. All righty. Approve of the agenda?
If you make a motion, we approve the agenda. If there are no modifications for Thursday, March 31st, 2022.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
All right.
All righty. Anything from the purchase order log? Internal?
Glad to see Tracy back.
Tracy who?
Tracy. There we go.
It's already started. I'm sorry.
All righty. Internal budget revision?
Yes, sir. I have one internal budget revision for the council's consideration. The request comes from the Extension Service, Department 412. Mike's requesting that they be allowed to decrease line 214 travel by $1,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $4,443.10 with 36.7% spent to date, and increase supplies, materials, line 341 by $1,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $2,316.94 with 67.0% spent to date, and the request is being made because they want to purchase some shelving units.
Okay. Change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Devon J. Dorsey as a deputy sheriff with an annual salary of $51,692. thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, effective April the fifteenth, 2022.
Where's he from?
Canol County.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Really, sir.
Already served, very good. Uh, change in status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Thomas Knock, uh, he is being promoted to Sergeant Deputy Court Marshal with a salary increase from thirty-five eight seventy-two to thirty-nine nine oh nine, effective April the first, tomorrow. Um, approval of the minutes, March seventeenth, uh, council meeting, I was, uh, Vice President Whitaker and Allen Davis County Administrator were not present, so.
Mr. President, Mr. President of the Council, or Vice President, or whatever the heck you are.
Just Jim.
I'm here to accept the minutes, so it's up to you.
I'll sign them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign a pooh. Boarding commission calendars, get back to it, sorry about that. Give it to me. Gotta love these outfits. Here we go. Uh, we are here today on the twenty, no, it's April, I'm sorry, thirty-first. Next is, uh, April the seventh, meeting at nine, on March, let's see, we have a library, nope, that was the twenty-fourth, sorry, twenty-eighth, that's already done. Six PM on the fourth for Planning Commission, six PM, or five PM Sewer District, and six PM Stormwater District for next week. Any other changes or anything?
Mr. Vice President, if I may, um, as you look forward to, uh, your, uh, April meetings, we do have, uh, a tour of the Judicial Center scheduled, uh, on your agenda for eleven-thirty AM on April fourteenth. Um, we, uh, facilities, uh, and court security have been working, um, to make some changes to the Judicial Center to accommodate the additional magistrate, um, which will be, uh, magistrate judge, which will be added July first. We think we have that taken care of, we did meet with Judge Lawrenson.
Are they, are they appointing an individual to that?
Judge Lawrenson will appoint someone, yes, sir. Um, and he agrees that with the addition of this magistrate, we're pretty much maxed out with space. He anticipates that next legislative session, we could pick up two additional magistrates and maybe even another circuit judge, so we need to have a plan in place. He wants to look at the, um, the plans that this council approved, that he was involved in, um, several years ago with the Crawford Building, uh, and the expansion of that into a, an annex, uh, for magistrate court, um, but wants you to get a kind of a feel of what space issues, um, there are over there. On April the twenty-first, at one o'clock, um, we've had a discussion regarding supplemental funding, um, it's something that we discussed as part of budget preparation, uh, and you asked that we talk about that as a, as a separate, in a separate meeting, as a separate issue, so we have tentatively scheduled that for one o'clock PM on April twenty-first. And for probably the past six months or so, we've been working with the folks at Clorox to arrange, um, a tour of the facility that's being, uh, built, and they've given us some dates of April twenty-eighth, May fifth, May twelfth, and May nineteenth, that will schedule some, uh, time, um, to do what we did with P&amp;G several years ago, that we'll, we'll meet out there, and they'll put us on a, on a shuttle and take us around and look at the sites. I didn't know if there was any dates that maybe that are not working for you.
Have you laid the levies?
Uh, yeah, we'll lay the levy on the nineteenth. Um, we prepared the budget letters, uh, this week for the internal and outside agencies, um, they'll be in your packet for signature next week, and the document, um, that the clerk needs to sign to attest to the fact that you did lay the levy, um, is also prepared, and that will be ready on the nineteenth. We did the two Class II legal ads, um, they both appeared in the, in the journal, we did have certification publication, we have not gotten any, any calls at all, so, um, we'll be, we'll move ahead on that on the nineteenth, and then that'll put your twenty-two, twenty-three budget finally in place.
Okay. Um, let's see, what we have, assessor's log, motion, oh, yeah, here we are. Uh, bond reduction, South Brook, Section One, Phase.
Proclamation.
Oh, proclamation, one more, okay, yep. Do we have anybody here to look it over? Just need to. Okay, it's a proclamation by the Berkeley County Council of West Virginia for, uh, equal opportunity in housing and rights all guaranteed for Americans under Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Do you want me to read it all, or just approve it, or just adopt it?
We do the same.
All righty, uh, so we have the proclamation of fair housing month, uh, bond reduction, South Brook, Section One, Phase One, final plat, BCP file number two-two-oh-two dash oh-six-three tied to BCP two-one-oh-seven dash two-four-six and two-one-oh-five dash one-seven-six. Uh, bond oh-seven-nine-eight-three-zero-eight, Engineering Department is okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions about it? And we have a letter of endorsement for the Isaac Walton League of America?
Please, Mr. President, if you have any questions, is the first here, that you have gotten, um, a letter from him, for the Isaac Walton, so if you have any questions, is there any audience?
Well, come on up.
I was about to, yeah.
Uh, it says Sportsman's Bash, uh, two Saturdays from now, we're Conservation Club, this is a fundraiser for us, um, and we work with the state BBC to get a one-day, we can call it a festival, and then, or five oh one three, so, they asked us to get a letter from you guys saying that it was okay with you, that we pulled the event with, uh, ears in. I'm here.
Remember the Isaac Walton, I was event, you attended, you didn't, cause you weren't here, but the, uh, the wild animal feed.
Yep, we still do that with Boy Scouts every spring, uh, we do a lot of different events, but, uh, you can't do like it used to be done. We have to, now, you, it used to be an event where all the sportsmen would bring their tape for the year and then prepare it for the, for Boy Scouts, but you can't, based on the FDA, you gotta buy meat at the store and.
My, my first taste of Rattlesnake.
Yep. Name's James.
Tastes like chicken.
All righty, so that's in the consent agenda, that's, uh, that's usually the same thing that we do for other organizations and, so. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's a move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign a pooh. I have a correction of the assessment log, um, nothing was provided to, from the assessor, so we're good to go. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice President, I appreciate that. I only had one meeting this week, and that was the Berkeley County Public Service Water District. Uh, the, it's fairly, uh, long meeting, because, uh, we had an update on the activities at the Barker Field Plant, it's about fifty percent design, and, uh, um, they'll probably be ready for, uh, bidding it in November, forty million dollars or whatever. Uh, it goes, of course, right behind where the old plant was, cause they have to keep it, the old plant running while they build the new plant, so, uh, that'll be interesting. And, uh, they had to get a, buy a half acre ground off the, I think they call it the Colonel or something, he lives right behind it, and, uh, of course, the design is dependent on the Colonel's wife to make sure she agrees with the aesthetics of the building, and, uh, so that, that took a while to go over that.
How, how are they coming along with, uh, I know part of that program was to, uh, find some new well locations.
They're still looking, um, they're having trouble with the landowners in the south of Berkeley, cause, you know, they don't want wells on their property and all this kind of stuff, but they're, they're continuing to, to talk to them and try to get something going, uh, and of course, the other possibility is Invercory. Getting water, Invercory's pumping out, use that, so that's another possibility.
Yeah, but, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, I don't know, logistically, didn't they use water out of Invercory?
No, I think one sent emergency, uh, but, of course, Baker Lake's sort of their backup supply, which is, that's, that's technically a surface water supply, so that's, you know, that's different. Uh, they're also, uh, in conversations with the, uh, Tom McEdison, because of the, uh, controversy over Tom McEdison putting their, uh, electric service over top of the water lines, which means they can't access the water service, cause it's got power on top of it, and so they're currently negotiating with Tom McEdison to try to fix that, and of course, they're gonna start getting tough on that, saying, no, you're gonna have to move, so, it'll be worked out, but it could get them.
I was always told that water and electric just don't mix too good.
Yeah, the funny thing about that.
Yeah.
And.
They mix really well.
It's just what happens after they mix.
Yeah. That was moving.
I did hear a little bit about some of the South Berkeley residents, felt like the letter that was sent out was a little bit too demanding, instead of asking.
Oh, really? Oh, a little strong.
A little strong, yeah.
Yeah, I did see the letter, so I didn't hear anything, but I'm not a South Berkeley.
Yeah, you know, it's not so much what you say, it's always how you say.
Yeah, totally.
Okay, Mr. Delly.
I had, uh, no meeting.
Okay. Mr. Coconut?
Uh, yes, sir, I only had the one meeting, and that was with Landmarks, and, um, we're still moving along there with the MOU, uh, Boarding Cabinet Association, and I'm, you know, pleased to, I say that, I think that's moving on very smoothly, and thank you, Anthony, uh, who helped me prepare that document. They need to take it back to their association to see if any changes need to be made, or recommendations to make a little better, and, um, bring it back, and hopefully we can get this accomplished, but, uh, you know, that, that organization is, uh, very active and, uh, trying to do a lot of good stuff at the cabinet.
Anything else from anybody?
We received the lease, uh, the proposed lease from the Department of Highways.
Morgan.
Morgan. So Anthony and Jeff had looked it over, um, I have a couple of questions, but I think we have a longer agenda for consideration in two weeks, next week. So, what we do, we did get the lease agreement from the state.
Does the lease agreement, uh, still allow us, I remember one of the thoughts that we had, had a conversation about was to put in a handicap fishing access, is that still?
It does. My only question, and I think Randall addressed it this morning, is monuments in need of some repairs and cleaning, um, just wanna make sure that we're not taking on a substantial financial obligation, so, but we'll have all that resolved next week.
It sounded like Randall's willing to help with that.
Yeah, like I said, I think he answered that this morning, so, but we did bring it up to him, so I think he's already.
I think he realizes the importance of it, in, you know, being the first settler in West Virginia, but, so. Good enough. I did not have any meetings to report on, so, no applications for reappointments or anything? Counselperson issues?
Actually, I'm sorry, just, I was, I would like to have, um, a reappointment letter sent out to Mr. Kunkel.
Okay.
With the Public Service Sewer District, Mr. John Kunkel, a reappointment letter, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Delly, counselperson issues with the, um, South Berkeley Park design?
So, uh, um, I had, uh, we talked about it a little bit, um, here and there, I talked to, uh, Gary Wyand, had him put together a, um, his staff put together a basic, um, start for a park down in South Berkeley, um, and when I say basic, it was to clear an area for a field, and there's an area, if you look at the topo, um, just, uh, just, um, south and, um, just south and east of where the dog leg is in the back corner, back of the property, there's an area in there that's fairly level. It, uh, has a very slight gentle slope to it, um, to be able to clear a field in that area, um, and, uh, run a road into the property, obviously you have to demo the house, but run a road into the property, and a parking area, put a bathroom in, and a shelter, just kind of the basics to get a park started, um, and then look at a, a design of, uh, of putting a trail around the property.
How big of a field, or really a soccer field?
Something big enough to be able to, um, for kids to be able to go there and.
Run and play.
Run and play or practice, um.
Is there weather, um, soccer fields with any of the schools?
Oh, there is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, there is, but, I mean, one of, one of, one of the issues with the trail at the school and, and the fields at school is technically they're not supposed to use them during school hours, so if there's something going on that's not part of that, they're really not supposed to be out there occupying them.
Yeah, and the field could actually be reserved as, say you wanna set up a carnival or, you know, just, as, you know, just, like, oh, oh.
Right.
Gives your place to set that up.
Something, yeah, so there's, there's an area to, it's just a, a fairly flat area to be able to utilize for.
Have you had any local input in this, in any of this?
We've, we've had a local, we've had some local input, Eddie and I went out there at one point and had, um, had, uh, I don't know, was there a dozen or so? Or at least, yeah. Maybe two dozen people?
We've posted on, uh, on our county's webpage of, about looking for ideas of what to do there, so we, we pulled all those off, and then I had those discussions with a lot of people that evening, uh, about the future use and their desires for what, what they'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, there was some, there was a lot of good input on it, there was some little far out there ideas, you know, somebody, somebody said, put a dollar score on it, you know, like, we need another one, um, but, um, but there was, there was some good input, and, and there was a lot of comments about, you know, a shelter, a meeting place, you know, that type of thing, so it just sounds to me like that's a natural start, just to get something so that now it's, it's a park, you've got plenty of opportunity to evolve and change and, and clear field off to be able to have, uh, you know, someplace for activity.
Have you discussed any of this with Park City?
Uh, well, we've had some conversations in the, in the, uh, um, in the strategic planning of, you know, how it'll fit in and all that.
Well, I wondered about maintenance.
Well, and that's, that's the other part, I, I mean, obviously, if we're going to, and we've talked about this, uh, for the last couple of years, about creating a park, I mean, if we create a park there and a park on the north end, we're obviously going to have to figure out the, um, maintenance. I, I spoke with Eddie a little bit about it, um, did you ever get a chance to look into that?
Which parks?
The, when I ask about how parks, uh, maintenance, you know, maintenance going into annual maintenance budgets into, um, some of our.
He was actually working on that part of his budget, uh, when I told him about that. Uh, but two weeks ago, I think it was, Bob and I and his, his new, uh, Director of Operations walked the, uh, twenty-two acres in, inward, and the ten acres down at Spring Mills as well, just to be able to float some ideas and just look the lay of the land, uh, to see how things, things will lay. So, yeah, we, we've had the conversations of, the board is, is a part of everything that we've done, uh, and what we, you know, hope to be able to do in the future, and, and they are, they do understand that at some point, you know, it will come under their umbrella for maintenance and, and use and rentals and everything else.
That depends on what we're reporting on.
Yes, sir.
So, so the thought process is, I'd like to send this out for an RFP and get a quote on what it's going to cost, so that we know where we're at with expenses on, what it's going to. going to cost to go ahead and, and do the basics on this to create a park.
I, I integrate first step and...
Well, you've got to have the first step.
Exactly.
This is, I think, what you're talking about is necessary as a first step.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you've got to have bathrooms if you're going to put people there. You've got to have bathrooms, we've got to have an area to drive in, we've got to have an area to park. And it just makes sense to put a shelter. And then why not create a trail around it so that people can, you know, have...
Yeah.
A trail, I think, is an inexpensive, I mean, nothing's cheap, but it's an inexpensive way to utilize the whole property, at least the perimeter of it, and be able to, you know, create something. They have, they have a couple of runs up there every year in Inwood where they do that. I don't know that, that may be big enough, that trail, to be able to incorporate that into those runs.
I don't know. Well, I know the one they do at the Christmas tree.
It's a busy one.
It's not large enough for that.
There's too many people on that one.
There's several thousand people there now.
Yeah, but you may be able to incorporate it into it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, some part of it.
Sure.
Be nice to have a trail near them. Omnitrax too, that would kind of go beside it. You know, you take time to get near there.
That's one of those things that really don't mix good, people and trains, you know?
Well, yeah, especially when the trains are there. But off the side, maybe parallel or something.
That's, that kind of goes with the rails and trails.
Without...
That's not...
Rails.
I don't know.
It's not rails.
Yeah, but I, no, I think there's, I mean, there's a regular rails and trails thing that, that they don't do in West Virginia. Most other states do that, where they run trails parallel with rails. But in West Virginia, I don't think it's a thing yet.
They're at least five feet in the country.
What's that?
They're at least five feet in the country.
With... Wow. Especially when they're moving fast.
Consensus of the council for me to develop an RFP though?
I think so.
Just so you know, we do have two RFPs on the street right now. The roof at 750 Baltimore Street, we have the pre-bid for that this coming Monday. We did open it two weeks from today. And then the following Monday, we have the pre-bid for the demolition and the asbestos 126. And then that bid will be free until today. So we'll do this RFP next week and get it out on the street.
Good. Do you have a pre-bid meeting, you say, for...
We have a pre-bid on the roof at nine o'clock this coming Monday. And then we have the pre-bid for 126 at nine o'clock a week from this coming Monday.
And I do not have a problem being part of the pre-bid for this down South Berkeley.
I'll let you know, I'll get some leads.
All right. Anything else? All right, next on the agenda, we're just a little bit ahead of time, is Mark Chivone with the executive, he's director, Executive Director, Farmland Protection Board, request to close easements.
Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning. Good to have you. Good to see you.
Thank you. This is a request to close our top two ranked properties from fiscal 21. One of them we're kind of excited about because we don't have a large orchard in our portfolio. So Appalachian Orchard is a 350 acres. The second property is a mix of farm and historic resources, and it's also the head or, or the Tuscora Creek. So I think it's a Henry Powers house. We'll protect it as part of that, that easement. We set $2 million aside last year for easements. These book came in at lower than that, it was a hundred and savings. And in particular, the orchard, the asking price was the price that's quoted here, 1.59 million. The appraised value came in at only 530,000 more. By state law, we can't pay more than a rower of the ask, the appraise. So that's a substantial operation. So...
Wow. Is that an active orchard?
It is. It's Appalachian Orchard. It's my, my chorus property.
That's all along Ardenville Road there.
So it'll continue to be an active orchard. I don't know what it's planted in now. Assume apples.
Apples and peaches.
Peaches.
Yeah, and...
They're in bloom.
This is an interesting project for us because it's so large. And it really consists of three existing tax parcels. We're going to allow for subdivision of those three parcels in the future. We're kind of cluing in on the federal program, which basically states if you have a multi-parcel property that's going into an easement, and each of the parcels is still larger than the average farm size in that county as per the Centers of Agriculture. And you've made preparations through the, through the easement report and the survey, yeah, you can subdivide in the future. Because we want these parcels to be viable moving forward. We're also doing something unusual on this property. We're allowing for the future provision of a dormitory style housing to house H2A seasonal workers.
Really?
Because again, this is an important component of that particular industry is to be able to bring people in, help with our harvest. So the board wanted to basically accommodate this, given the large size of this property and the fact that it is an active commercial orchard. We're pretty excited.
It's funny, when I first came to this county, I bet there were 20, 25 migrant families. Now there's what, less than five probably.
Their orchard, south of Jarrettstown, still has some dormitory style houses.
Yeah, but, yeah. Migrant, I mean, of course, the biggest one was Dry County, which is now rental.
Storage units, yeah.
But, you know, really going down. Of course, the whole idea of migrant labor has come under, you know...
Scrutiny.
Yeah.
And that's why we'd still like to accommodate. And so we're coupling the deed with the immigration federal code to make sure that that definition, you know, people understand moving forward that this can't be turned into like a college dormitory, but for the purposes of bringing folks across the border to help with the agricultural harvest, that will be something that's on the season moving forward.
Okay. So Mark, does this include the orchard off of Gold Miller?
No, that's the southern property. This is the property that is north of Horace Farm Market, which was owned by Mark. So it starts at that northern line. And actually, it shares a significant boundary with the Porhouse Farm Park.
Yes.
So that view will be protected forever from the pork. And then it also shares a kind of a cutout boundary with another one of our easements, the Winterford Lois easement, which is 98, is protected. So in that part of the county, from Ardenville Road to Porhouse Road, we'll have a block protected right in that spans, amplify range.
Very good. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Well, you want to, Nathan's not here, Sheriff.
If you want to jump ahead and do your state budget revision.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Davis? In your package is state budget revision number 10 for the month of, of March. It's, this is one of the smaller ones that, that we've done. We've revised the process with the new finance director and new software of UNIS. We're not including the ACHs in your state budget revisions because they're coming in as a direct deposit, so, so that they're properly allocated to, you know, primarily federal and state grants, properly coded and allocated to the appropriate revenue source. We're doing those outside of state budget revision because it isn't necessary. So you'll see as we go forward, your state budget revisions from this point on will be primarily checks that have been received the previous month. And you can see, since your state budget revision number nine, we've received 30 checks, totaling $82,757. $31,055 was received for a payment of IT services from various outside agencies. We also received three payments from the state of West Virginia totaling $15,468 for DHH, DHHR drug testing. As I mentioned, the total of $82,757, recommending that the $31,055 be placed in the IT department's budget. We did receive a check from Jefferson County in the amount of $926 for Sheriff's Department overtime, recommending that that be placed into the sheriff's overtime budget. We also had received a check for claims payment from WV Corp. in the amount of $751 for damage that had been done to a $2,019 Durango. That will go back into the central garage account to pay for parts and services to repair that Durango. And then the balance of $50,025 will be placed in your contingency account.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the state budget revision number 10, Fund 001?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. We're due for a break. Nobody else is here yet, so let's take a break until we reconvene with Sheriff Harmon. Nobody else is here yet until let's take a break until we reconvene with Sheriff Harmon.
Okay, we're back in session and the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon, request for use of 5:10, 5:20.
Good morning.
Good morning Sheriff.
I appreciate, as always, everyone having me, the opportunity to speak with you in regards to that. I think as a community, citizens of the county have been waiting for and given that the nation's been shut down and technically shut off from reach of our citizens and community, it feels to be a great opportunity for our citizens to know the resources that exist in the county. If there's one thing that I've identified early on, even before becoming sheriff, that Berkeley County has co-located a unique ability and resources for not only substance abuse, but for families in need of anything. And I want to be able to advertise those resources or be able to educate the public in terms of what resources are here. And, you know, those resources can help our citizens, the community as a whole, that contribute to their well-being and safety. And most importantly, how their law enforcement and other first responder agencies can help bridge the gap that can favorably capstone what would be Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. And I say that because I'm asking for a day on Saturday, May 21st, in the hours of 09:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, to have a community event that'll bring all these resources together, first responders from all different agencies, that include the fire department, EMS, who is also celebrating Emergency Medical Service Appreciation Week that same week, 167th Air Guard, the reserves, all the complements that Berkeley County Sheriff's Office can offer, like kids ID, our dive team, our SWAT team, patrol cars, K-9, and even personal tours of our building by myself to the citizens. Some of the events that I'm looking at having there, that the activities, I should say, that the public can participate in would be a trailer supplied by, I believe it's the Martinsburg Initiative, Noel Cornelis has offered a trailer that's called In Plain Sight, or Hidden In Plain Sight. This trailer is a unique piece of equipment in terms of actually duplicating a teenager's room where his parents and custodians and guardians can walk through this room and identify red flags and help educate these parents on preventive measures once identifying red flags of their children getting involved in substance abuse of any sort. Those are the kind of activities that we'll have there. Kids bounce houses and stuff like that, other kids activities. It includes the local emergency planning committees, Stop the Bleed, practical activities in terms of turnkeying and whatnot, and keeping it to a manageable level, but imagine the front parking lot and a portion of the DRC parking lot being filled with nothing but tables and tents and activities that the community and citizens at their leisure can walk through and get to know not only their law enforcement, but the services that the county has to offer. This is an opportunity that I see as county government being able to give back to the citizens of the county. And it is for this reason specifically that I'm asking that the county consider waiving any vendor fees or requirements in terms of policies or permits that may be currently required for the use of county properties. Also interested in looking at trying to use the Judicial Center parking areas so citizens can have a place to park and we don't have to worry about vehicles traveling in and out of the parking lot. Now mind you, we'll plan this very, very much in detail so we're not interrupting the services that DRC or the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office provide currently during the event. This is Saturday.
And they are, they, what are the DRC's hours on Saturday?
Half day till noon.
Till noon? Yeah, I mean, I see that taking up parking spaces, that type of thing, so I guess you probably found a police officer or somebody to keep track of parking, huh?
Yes, sir, we'll have reserves there and we'll have the necessary staff available. And again, we're not, we're not looking at using the entire parking lot area, we're not going to encroach that much. Just maybe that back row that puts up against our parking lot.
Are you fighting the city of Martinsburg?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, have you said anything to Tim Si about this?
No, sir, not yet.
I'm sure he would like to get involved.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe have a tent or a table or something set up there.
It was a couple meetings ago from the LAPC, apparently I was made chairman of community events without actually knowing it, but it's...
So you didn't, you weren't there?
You weren't at the meeting, were you?
You volunteered without being there?
Yes.
No, you got volunteered.
So, but, you know, I'll gladly take the charge on it, you know, so this is still within its planning period, but yes, sir. Mr. Davis, we plan on asking a bunch of folks to come in and participate in this and be able to spread the information as best as they can. So imagine, you know, tents, twelve by twelve areas where it's nothing but a miniature tent city where people can walk around and get information from the resource tables that we set up, including, you know, Berkeley County Recovery Resource Center, Family Resource Network, another...
Can I ask that you also contact the Health Department?
Yes.
...to this, so, you know, to coordinate, make sure everyone's licensed with the Health Department.
What is your, what is your cleanup plan for that?
Cleanup?
Yeah, aftermath of, once it's over with. I mean, I know that we do many events downtown and when we do the events downtown, that actually, the city actually has their employees come in and clean up the whole area where the events are at.
I'll get with Mr. Lang and myself between our two agencies, I think we can, we can help manage that with our staff.
Right, because, you know, there's usually a bunch of trash, a bunch of...
Yeah, we're going to try to prevent that as much as possible and clean as we can.
Yeah, garbage cans, those type of things, got to look into making sure all that. So it sounds to me like you're asking three things here, right? You're asking for us to waive the fees, you're asking to use that parking lot for this event, and you're asking to use the judicial parking lot as well?
Yes, sir. Just for the day.
Right, I think that, I mean, to me, the only issue is really the DRC, as long as it works well with them, they've got a great...
Yeah, and the parking lot should be big enough to accommodate everyone. Just wanted to make sure primarily that the council was aware of it. And we'll do a special events notification to the principal, just so, you know, in case there's an issue, we're taken care of.
Does it make sense to try to line up some community service people? Do they do, the community service do?
And it's not to say that we're going to use every inch of the space that we're asking for, I'm just trying to plan for the best outcome possible, especially with fire trucks and ambulances and stuff like that, but with the large apparatuses there. Like I said, we will do our best not to even encourage, we've got a certain area that we want to operate in and we're going to encourage it further on DRC, other than that back line area.
So is there, is there a fundraising component to this, or is this all just...
Well, surprisingly enough, the Homeland Security Grant Program may be able to fund it through Sandy Green, who is the Emergency Management Coordinator for Western Department of Homeland Security. He had offered that during our last LAPC meeting. Of course, we're obviously looking into that and we're open to that idea potentially.
Are you, are you asking that the application that we just recently adopted, that policy to...
Be waived for the day.
The policy, you're not asking for the policy to be waived, you're asking for the fee to be waived.
Any fees incurred with the policy, you know, for that day.
Because I think that we would, at least in my opinion, I would like to see us keep the application in force.
Yes, sir.
That protects all of us, especially with the liability information that we need. And, once it's done, then they're cleared for future use if they would so choose. They wouldn't have to go through this process again.
But in the spirit of, I don't know exactly how expedited that process can be, how long it takes for approval, and I know the policy stipulates to another, correct me if I'm wrong, another million dollar policy in terms of mentioning or having Berkeley County mentioned within that specific policy. And it's not that we're having a fair or comparable size worth of vendors, I'm looking at maybe three, potentially four, and that's it in terms of, and there's a couple that's already went through this process. I'm not so sure logistically if they're set up to have that additional million dollars. I'm not sure on the red tape involved to try to get that, and I just didn't want that to hold up. Say, for example, you know, Mission Barbecue from them, and they're, say, they've given us a free or severely discounted rate. I just hate to tell them, oh, by the way, you got to purchase an additional million dollar worth of coverage. That's what I'm asking for.
Right, because it's not a fee.
Right, so that's what I'm asking for, and if there was, and again, I'm new at this, so if there was any permitting that was needed to do something like this, I was asking for that waived and the usage of the property.
The second page of that application, to me, looks much easier for somebody to comply with.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, if they present us with certificate of insurance, which they should already have, the council could approve it in Thursday.
And, I mean, have you looked at this, the second page, Sheriff, of this?
I've looked at it for the spin of it.
Okay, I mean, to me, to me, the second page is very easy, I would think, for anybody in business to be able to comply with. You know, they may not have a charter of articles of incorporation, because we're very small, I get that, but general liability insurance, company driver's license, proof of vehicle insurance, copy of license to do business in West Virginia, a copy of the Health Department, as Mr. Barnhart had mentioned, and a copy of inspection by the fire marshal if required.
I think that that's very easy, yeah.
My only concern is, you know, what happens to some of these food facilities? Are they going to come back against the council? Because you sponsored this event on your properties, and that's why I agree with Councilperson Okinawa, it'd be at least nice to have some assurance that if there is an instance, you know, happens if they're removing their, their equipment and someone gets injured.
Oh, yeah, no, yes.
I mean, I hate to think that way, but they're going to come back through the deep pockets if we don't have at least some protection.
Oh, I, I don't think it's unreasonable, or should it be a lengthy approval process to simply get this, the second page of this accomplished?
I agree.
Yeah, so I think that can be done rather quickly and easily.
Okay.
Okay, no questions?
Good. And I, and I also appreciate you serving as that event chairperson, because this, you know, it is a, it sounds like it'll be a very nice event to bring everybody together, let the public see what's available.
Very much.
Does that cause any, does that cause any legal issues down the road requiring other individuals in that property that we've already allowed to have set up on that property and require two million to say now we're going to let these do this?
No, I don't feel...
We never, we haven't had one of these filled out yet. So there are no existing food trucks approved for use of that property.
And this is a one-time event? There was one over there not too long ago, I seen, so...
They were.
We ask him until this is done, not done, it's not going to come back. That's how it all goes.
Yeah, I was going to do the question, did it fill that out?
No.
So I was asking legal counsel that question.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have approved the sheriff's request and, and also in the motion that the second page of that application be completed.
And most of the way of a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, like sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Please feel free to stop by on that day. Thanks, man.
Should, should, should be good. We've seen a lot of results here lately in town with, with food events.
I'm looking for a pretty good, pretty good, first ones will build from there, yeah. Looking for a pretty...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Food usually attracts people.
Yeah.
Good food attracts a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have Amy Serball here that wants to, let me find my right, no, I just saw it here, I'm sorry. Oh, here you are. With the Come On Up, and it's a Child and Family Services Supervisor for the Children's Home Society of West Virginia, a proclamation for the Child Abuse Prevention Month for Children's Memorial Flag.
Sir, my name's actually Amanda Schenk, Amy Serball's sick today, so she asked me to come over.
Well, welcome, Amanda.
So I'm also a Child and Family Services Supervisor for Children's Home Society. I do have a proclamation prepared to read to you all today. Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, Children's Memorial Flag, April 2022. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Berkeley County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas it is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with the child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood, and whereas Berkeley County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas the Child Welfare League of America has promoted the Children's Memorial Flag as a way of memorializing the thousands of children and teenagers in the United States who die violently each year, and whereas each year elected officials across the country... each year elected officials across the country become involved by flying the flag. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and April 1st, 2022, as Berkeley County Children's Memorial Day. The Berkeley County Council urges all citizens to memorialize the thousands of children across the country who die violently each year, and call upon all citizens to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. The Berkeley County Council will fly the Children's Memorial Flag from April 1, 2022 through April 30, 2022, to commemorate this effort.
Okay, you've heard the proclamation, we have any statements, comments, or...
We'll fly, I'm planning it.
It will be in front of the Judicial Center, we typically fly during the month of April in front of the Judicial Center, so Mike has it, it will be raised tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Yeah, tomorrow, eight fifteen. Eight fifteen in the morning, I think Katie's going to be there also, be able to mark some that, and I can fight you all to time.
Katie?
Katie, well, she's on the, um, on, um, press, and W B M, which is a whiteboard cut for September, I think it's time.
Eight thirty.
Fifteen, so she's, because that's when the music race applies, I think, eight fifteen, eight thirty, she gets, um, eight seventy, seventy, you know, the extra idea by eighteen.
Okay.
I will probably be out of town by then, but I, I think, I think it's, I think it's a great job you guys do for the children in our community.
It's got to be a hard job, too.
It's been a burden, I understand.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve or to adopt?
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, I'm going to approve the proclamation for the Child Abuse Prevention Month and the Children's Memorial Flag, April 2022.
I will, I will second that motion to adopt.
All those in favor say aye, like sign a pose, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and Legal Director, Mr. Jeff Mosley, for the Order Board of Review and Equalization. If the council will recall, in years past, when we did the orders, we've had instances where all five council people signed the order regardless of whether they had been present or not as part of the hearing, and Mr. Spurgeon actually brought that up during public comment one, one time that he received an order which was in his favor, but that all five council people had signed it when he moved in, they want to hear it. So this year, Jeff's going to go through each individual order, and I have who was absent, and I think Penny, she's going to send the order down, and if you were present at the day of the hearing, we ask that you sign it, if you weren't present, then you're abstaining from signing it. Fair enough, okay. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you. Each of these is, the heading with the, the names are taken straight from the way that they're formatted in the assessor's records, so that's exact. The property that is listed is not necessarily their mailing address, it is the actual property that assessment deals, and then the district map and parcel ID. The first one is Thomas A. Grossi and Emily N. Grossi, and...
Doug and Jill were not present.
I think that he wasn't here.
So everyone but Mr. Whitaker should sign this one.
Good, so we're silent.
The second one is Uphill LLC, Chair of John Lapavitz.
Everyone except Mr. Whitaker should sign this, because most of these were done when you were in double vacation, so they were done in that particular...
Next one is Rohan R. Mohite, or No PK, I'm not sure how to say it, and Ernestina G. Mohite.
Again, everyone but Mr. Whitaker.
The next one is William Bruce Mason III and Dorothy L. Blankley.
Everyone but Mr. Whitaker.
Hey, you're getting all, what kind of...
Yo, we're busy that day, huh?
Do you ever show up?
Once in a while.
Next is Atomic Park Campgrounds.
Everyone but Mr. Whitaker.
And Preston S. Mosher.
Everyone but Mr. Whitaker. Goodness gracious.
Shadow Hawk Properties, West Virginia LLC.
Everyone was present, so all four of you should sign it.
Yeah, I think those two, those two, that's the first...
They've already approved them.
Yeah.
They're just signing them.
We voted during the meetings, we were...
Yeah.
This is just memorializing if you all decided. I think Shadow Hawk. Everyone signs.
Next is Michael W. Cruthers Senior and Kathy J. Cruthers.
Mr. Cruthers, yeah, you were not present, so you do not sign that.
And the last one is Christopher W. Hill and Stephanie J.
The same way with this one, they, you were not present. And then that way, when the orders go out, they'll reflect who you voted. I was here for the Cruthers, correct? Correct. Yeah, Cruthers and Hill, Jim, you're...
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, I was here in spirit, but not in body. That's right. All right, uh, let's see, we've already taken care of state budget revision, possible executive session, or no? No, sir, we're good? We do not need more today, thanks. All right, well, Mr. Barnhart?
Mr.? Well, yeah, you have to answer.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry, any items from the public?
No. Mr. Vice President, I'm running recess.
We are in recess, thank you.
So, Jeff, couldn't...